Hi Alex.
Hello Sarah, how are you?
I'm good, how are you doing today?
I'm doing pretty good, thank you so much.
Yeah, we missed you in Tuesday's session.
Yes, yes. How's your studying going?
Uh, it's going alright. I finished my first round of preparation, now I have to start revising. So, since I've covered most of the topics that were new for me, so I'm hoping that the revision won't take that long. But still, I mean, given that it was like a lot of stuff to absorb, so it's likely that I have sort of forgotten some of it. So may have to go over all those concepts again, but still it would take less time than I took with initial preparation. So, I think probably like in a month's time, I'll be able to tell better about if, how like how ready I am to give the exam.
Hmm.
What are your plans?
So, I'll be honest with you, I was projecting to take it in December of this year, but in all honesty, I'm a little nervous. I don't, I don't believe I'm completely ready for it yet. And you know, the last thing I want to do is, you know, take the exam and then, you know, and then fail, so.
Yeah, hi Zaret. Yeah, I know, I get that, yeah. But December is still like five months away and I think you just started preparing, right? So maybe that's why, yeah.
Hmm.
I think one, once you're done with at least your first round, you might actually feel more confident. Because when I started, I was, yeah, in the same boat as you.
Hmm.
Yeah, initially I thought that this is probably something I may not be able to do, but of course, I mean, that's why it's so valuable, it's so niche. It takes a lot out of you, you have to put in a lot of effort.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right and you know, I'm excited, you know, I know I'm going to take the exam for sure. Uh, I'm just, you know, thinking about the December timeline or not. So that's the only thing.
Yeah. You know, when I decided to do it initially, I didn't really uh, think that would be too hard. I don't know why, because I just looked at the contents, like the syllabus I would call it. Uh, but when I started studying, uh, that was when I realized that, no, it's, it's a lot of stuff. Initially, I, I took it easy when I started preparing, because I thought, oh, it's pretty simple, maybe I'll be done in like a month or two. I don't know why people take six months to a year, even longer.
Yeah. So what, what field of IT are you in right now? Are you, are you working in cybersecurity?
Uh, yes, I am actually in risk management and governance side.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, hi Cheryl. I will, so we have a lot of people joining now. We'll start in a couple of minutes. What about you?
So I, um, I work as a desk-side network support technician for Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I love it, I love it. It's a great company to, to work for.
Sounds good. I think network security, that's my weakest area, my weakest.
Yeah.
So what time is it there? It's four thirty AM here.
It's seven thirty PM here.
Hmm, okay.
Where are you Sarah?
I'm in Pakistan.
Oh, okay, well, it is next morning, okay.
Yeah. Where are you joining from Cheryl?
Uh, Michigan.
Okay.
Four thirty AM is dedication. That's, that's wild to me.
Uh, well, it was a busy week for me at work, because I work for a company that is US-based. So it's just normal for me to sometimes, you know, like work till late. Uh, because uh, like we have offices in US and Canada and we have to sometimes coordinate with them, so that's why. Hi Annette.
Hello.
So Josh was joining today, uh, he is busy, so I will be presenting today's session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Sarah.
So I have picked out some topics that I am comfortable with, let me share the window, but I still, let's see, I have to share that screen. Um, I didn't, I, it was like, like I said, it was a busy day, so I just cooked up a really plain-looking presentation. But I felt like the topic needed some graphics, so I should make it. So this is the plan and we can definitely modify depending on what, like most of the uh, people or what the majority of the audience wants to cover. So I was planning to cover cryptographic modes of operation, then we're going to cover some basic cryptographic attacks. And then a couple of practice questions. So are you guys okay with that? Do you have any other preference?
No, I'm okay with that.
No, that sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Well, I think let's wait for three, four minutes before we start. Let me see how many people we have here. Okay, wait, let me stop sharing for a bit, let me click. Hi Will.
Hello.
Yeah, my sister does not like my morning routine. Okay, let's share the screen and start. Okay, so, um, how many of you are comfortable with this topic?
Did you say comfortable?
Yeah, comfortable, yes. I just want to see like, uh, if, if it's one of those topics that you're struggling with, if it's something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't even do. Oh, okay, so it's one of.
As much as I've studied it, I'm, I'm still, you know, not grasping the total, so yeah.
Okay. Okay, and do others have the same feelings?
Yes.
Okay, I guess then it's good that we're covering it today. Um, so.
Some days are good, some days are bad, when it comes to cryptography.
Yeah, no, I, so I actually studied, uh, this in my masters and I even did my thesis in like on cryptanalysis, so it's, it's actually my favorite. Uh, so, uh, anyway, so these modes of operation, they are all for symmetric block ciphers. Uh, I'm going to keep engaged throughout the session, just to make sure that you understand the basics while we discuss these modes. So are you all familiar with symmetric ciphers? If somebody wants to, you know, just explain what they are?
The sender and the receiver uses the same key.
Exactly.
For encryption and decryption.
Yeah, perfect, exactly. So, uh, the sender and receiver, they share a secret key and that is used for both encryption and decryption. And, uh, what are block ciphers? Difference between block and stream ciphers? Anyone?
Is block like in groups and strings or individually, something like the blocks, I'm sure.
Hmm, okay. So, uh, block ciphers, yes, they are made up of like, uh, blocks of fixed length. And then they pass through the encryption function. With stream ciphers, it's, it's not exactly like this, where you might think that a bit is encrypted at a time. So we always have registers with stream ciphers, which are like buffers. So a stream cipher which has a length of, let's say thirty-two bits, it's going to capture those thirty-two bits, then perform the encryption function and then transmit it, right? So it's, it's not one bit at a time, but symmetric ciphers, because you can think of them as many blocks or many registers, they're smaller, so that's why they're faster. Anyway, so let's start with these modes. Uh, some of the common things that we're going to cover would be the plaintext, the ciphertext, the key, which would, you would see like in all of these diagrams, which will like come ahead. So plaintext represents the plaintext block, ciphertext represents the ciphertext block. Block cipher, you can tell that it's any block cipher of your choosing, you can think of it as AES. Uh, I don't know, IDEA, DES, I mean, that's, uh, that's discontinued, but still anyways, any block cipher. And then you have a symmetric key. Uh, now looking at the electronic code book mode, now this is the simplest mode. You take in a block of plaintext, as you can see here, then you encrypt it using a secret key and you get the ciphertext. So it's, it's not labeled like this, but you can think of it as plaintext two, like the second chunk of plaintext. Then that is encrypted with the same key, passes through the block cipher and then produces another ciphertext, let's call it ciphertext two, and so on. So this is how basically it works. So you repeat this with all the blocks of plaintext that you have. So what disadvantages do you see in this mode? Anyone?
Well, if that key is compromised, uh, then it's, it's compromised, if, if it gets in the hands of the wrong person.
Um.
You said it does it one at a time?
I, yes, I'm saying that we have, let's assume we have some plaintext and we divide it into, uh, those blocks. Let's assume our block cipher takes in an input of one twenty-eight bits, right? When we have a long text, we're going to break it down into blocks of one twenty-eight bits. And then one by one, we're going to encrypt that block of plaintext and the ciphertext, right?
So some is staying in plaintext while other parts are, are being encrypted. One at a time.
They are all encrypted. I think, I think what you could do, if you know the plaintext and use the ciphertext, you could actually, I think it's possible to figure out the key when you know what the plaintext is and you have the ciphertext.
Okay, okay, no, I'll, I'll just rephrase this. So at this point, when we're discussing these modes, you're not going to think about the key and you're not going to think about the block cipher. Let's, he is safe and the block cipher is very secure. Okay. Yeah, so our focus is only on the plaintext and the ciphertext and the mode that we're operating in. So in this case, uh, let me tell you and then maybe in the next modes, you'll be able to, uh, uh, like be able to assess better as to what are we looking at. So in this case, let's assume that, uh, we have a certain plaintext and that produces a ciphertext. Now, if the next block is similar to the first block, it will produce the same ciphertext.
Hmm.
Right?
Right.
So that is why this, this is where the mode, it actually gets its name, electronic code book. Because it's like a code, right, where the same plaintext block will always give the same ciphertext block.
Hmm hmm.
You get that?
Okay.
No, if there's any confusion, you can ask, because the rest.
No, it makes sense.
Hold on a second, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not quite getting that. You, you just said, okay, if the first plaintext produces one ciphertext and then if the second plaintext is the same plaintext as, as the first, it's going to produce the same exact ciphertext as the first?
Exactly, because look, the key is the same, the cipher is the same. So if you give a certain input, that will produce the same ciphertext.
Yeah, but, uh, my, my quick question is.
Yes.
Where would you get, uh, plaintext that are the same exact thing from a block of plaintext?
Okay.
Is that common?
I'm talking about if there's, uh, some plaintext where there is, uh, some repetition or there's some duplication.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, blank forms that have been encrypted ahead of time.
If, if it happens, okay, I got it.
So, so Sarah, my question, uh, so.
Yes.
How is that different from hashing?
Uh, how? So, uh, with hashing, uh, yes, I agree that when you take in an input, it produces a fixed-length output. But with hashing, that's irreversible. In this case, we can't produce the plaintext from the ciphertext.
Okay, all right, got it, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so, so this is basically, uh, the weakness in this, that, uh, it, it's kind of like a code book. You know, so what, what exactly is a code? Can anyone tell me what is a code?
Like a dictionary?
Um.
Then you can find the corresponding value for that.
Uh, yeah, so think of it like a mapping. Yeah, so you have like a certain, uh, input and it is mapped on to a certain output. So think of, think of Morse code, right? So there's, there's a symbol for every character in the alphabet. So that, that is code, like with code, there is no, uh, there's no algorithm behind that.
Ah, one-to-one mapping, it's like a look, it's like a dictionary or a lookup table.
Yes, you can say that, yeah, exactly. So if you have that mapping table, then you'll be able, so, I mean, if you do not keep that mapping a secret, then you cannot use that code to send anything confidential, right?
Hmm.
Yeah, whereas in case of a cipher, it actually transforms the plaintext. It performs some kind of like manipulation on it, whatever algorithm is inside that. It's going to perform that operation and then produce a ciphertext.
So in order to break this, I would need to have the key as well as the algorithm, if somebody wanted to crack that coding, in this case. You need two things.
No, but generally, cy, with ciphers, their algorithms are publicly known. They are designed in a way.
Oh, yeah, that's right, oh, yeah, that's true, that's true. It's a public, so, so it's the only thing you need, so basically all you need to protect is your key.
Exactly, exactly.
Need a strong key.
Yeah, but with a code, uh, book, you can say that if you find that mapping, you'll be able to decrypt whatever was encrypted before, whatever will be encrypted afterwards. But with cipher, you know, it's a transformation, right?
Yeah, 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 got it.
Anyways, everybody is clear with the electronic code book mode? Code book means there's like a fixed plaintext will produce the same ciphertext.
Yep, got it.
Right, so that's where it gets it, so this is how.
One more quick question, um.
Yeah.
Are the blocks, what, what sets the size of the block? What determines the size?
No, it can be any size. So I'm saying blocks, I think of any block cipher in this space. We are talking about the modes of operation in symmetric block ciphers. So it can be think of it as AES two fifty-six or AES one twenty-eight or any other, any other block cipher that you want to think of. I think two fish, three deaths.
Okay, so protocol, the, 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 what, what protocol you determine the blocks are, pretty much?
Uh, yes, yes. So this is just, just the operation in which you can use these, just to make them stronger.
Okay.
Like, because of the advancement in this computing and all that, we have to kind of like reinvent these or kind of like operate them in a manner which makes them more secure. And clearly, this mode is not secure if, if we use this.
Okay, all right, got it, thanks.
Okay, now, so now we know the problem with this mode is that, uh, any duplication in plaintext would be reflected in the ciphertext and this is a weakness. So now we want to address this. Let's move on to the next code, uh, mode. Cipher blockchaining mode. Okay, now one way to remember this is, the way that I remember it, is that the ciphertext would form a chain with the next block. The ciphertext that is produced, it will be chained to the next. So we have chaining here, so you're going to chain and have a cipher, so you're going to chain the ciphertext to the next. So this is how you can remember it. Now look at this, so, uh, here we have, uh, the plaintext. Now, the key is already shared and the initialization vector, which is like any random starting, uh, value that you can do, uh, or like a block that you're going to X or with the plaintext that is also known, uh, to the receiver. In this case, you can see that the ciphertext which will feed into the next one, even if this plaintext and the second plaintext, they are the same, yet the ciphertext will be different. Because we have, uh, added this here, this initialization vector and this ciphertext is different, which is why the resulting ciphertext would be different.
So, so can we draw a distinction between key and initialization vector, please?
Okay, so, uh, key you already know, that's a secret that we already, but we're going to reuse. So if I'm communicating with you and we have a shared secret key, I'm going to use that for every communication. And this initialization vector, think of it, uh, like, uh, as, uh, like a random number, like a nonce.
Like a nonce.
Yeah, for like a particular communication.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of add randomness.
Okay, all right.
Is the, is the initialization, uh, initialization vector because we're going to use that same length of cy, um, ciphertext to, to connect to that plaintext? Is that why we're starting? Is it the same exact length as the ciphertext?
Uh, now. Yeah, so since this will be chained to the second, but then what will come here, the first, that is why we have to use the initialization vector, because that is how it's designed to work.
So you're starting with that, but it's, is it that, is that, um, initialization vector the same length as that ciphertext? Is that why we're starting with that initialization vector?
Sorry, can you say that you're saying this initialization vector is the same?
The same length as the ciphertext that you're going to connect to that plaintext, or is it, uh?
Yes, yes, yes. Plaintext, initialization vector, ciphertext, they are all the same bit length.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, so every time you are going to perform an X or, uh, operation, like, uh, between two, uh, values, like for example, this can be a plaintext and initial, uh, initialization vector, they have to be the same length, only then you can perform this.
Okay.
Okay, so the ciphertext, that will be chained on to the next one. So this one resolves our problem, where we said that the plaintext, which was earlier on in the electronic code book mode, was producing the same ciphertext, but in this case, that will, uh, like, will not see that duplication. However, we will face another problem instead. And that problem is called error propagation. So think of it like that, if you have, you have a noisy, uh, transmission channel or there's some attacker who is trying to interrupt our communication and that is going to lead some errors in the ciphertext. And if there's any error, let's assume that there's an error in this ciphertext, the first one. Since that was chained on to the next one and it ultimately contributed towards the, the next blocks, which is why the error will propagate throughout the communication. Is everybody on, with me on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying, I'm wondering where would this error come from? I mean, would the ID be compromised? I don't quite get how an error, it's an algorithm, takes two inputs, where is the error coming from?
No, I'm saying once you encrypt, let's assume you get the cipher text, then you have to send it to the receiver, right? You're going to send it over some channel.
Right, oh, it actually gets, uh, distorted in transmission.
Yes, like you're putting some noise on the channel or maybe some attacker is just trying to interrupt with our communication.
Correct, 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 got it.
So, uh.
Ruin the rest of it. It's basically going to ruin the rest of the things in the chain, right?
Exactly, exactly. So one block gets messed up, it's going to mess up all the other blocks as well. So this is called, uh, propagation of error.
Yeah.
So now. Yes, so now cipher blockchaining, the advantage we got was that, uh, the same plaintext did not produce the same ciphertext. However, the downside was that there, uh, there's another issue in this one, which is called, uh, propagation of error. So now we need to resolve this other problem. We'll move on to the next mode. Is everybody clear with this one? Can you move on to the next one? Do you have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay, the third mode is called the counter mode. So one thing that I should tell you in the previous one, again, because there are going to be a lot of modes, so do not get confused by if the initialization vector was X or with the plaintext or did it happen maybe here? You know, before, uh, like at any stage, just trying to say that, uh, the information that you need to remember or retain, that is already given in the name. So cipher blockchaining, you just need to remember that your ciphertext will be chained or added to, uh, the next block of plaintext that you're going to transmit. Uh, counter mode, okay, now with the counter mode, uh, so we already have a pre-shored key. We have a nonce, which is like one-time number that we're going to use, and then we have a counter. So the nonce, uh, is a random value and the counter is going to increment with each block. So that will, again, if we have the same plaintext, it will resolve the problem that there will be no duplication. Uh, that will not be there. The other is because there is no chaining, there is no linkage uh, between this ciphertext and this block that we're going to process. So there will be no error propagation. Right?
What is the purpose of both nouns and the counter? Because both seems to add randomness.
Uh, okay, so nonce is, uh, just one, uh, random value that we've picked. If, now let's assume if we just had nonce here, then it would have the same problem that we had with electronic code book. Because we are using the same nonce and then when that is encrypted, uh, with the same key through this block cipher, then we'll get the same result, which will be X or with the plaintext. Right, so if we have the same plaintext, that will produce the same ciphertext. This counter, which is changing every time, that is preventing that duplication.
Okay, so it is the same nouns, but why are we using the same nouns?
Uh, because again, like if I'm communicating with you, I'm going, uh, we already have a pre-shored key. Imagine if I'm sending you like thousand blocks, can I send you thousand nonce? No. I can send you only one nonce, which is going to be a random starting point and then for every next one, we're going to add one to that, right? So let's assume that we choose a nonce as ten. So then we know that, uh, the first input is ten, next is eleven, next is twelve, thirteen, so on. The next time we communicate, we choose it as a hundred and thirteen, so then we start from that point.
So the counter, does it start from zero?
Uh, the counter, it can start from, uh, either, I'm, I'm not sure about that, but you can think of it as, even if you're sharing this, uh, with the, like between the sender and the receiver, the starting counter, it doesn't matter, it's incrementally increasing.
Correct, correct, correct. So I just, I was just wondering if you're passing them two things, the nonce and the counter, because they need to know where to start counting from.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So either, either it's zero or it, or it's already passed, but the thing is that it will be incrementally increased.
Yeah, got it, got it.
Yeah, so again, so because of, uh, the nonce and the counter, there will be, uh, there will be no duplication. Uh, there is no chaining, so we see that there will be no error propagation. And there's another, uh, advantage that we have with this one. Uh, I want to see if anybody else would be able to guess. I'm just going to give one hint, that this mode is actually very efficient.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm saying there's another advantage of this mode, which is that it is very efficient. Why is it efficient? Can anyone tell?
Parallel processing.
Yeah.
Exactly, parallel processing. Uh, good. So now, again, uh, even though the error will not propagate, but there's still, uh, we can assume that maybe, uh, there is noise on the channel or some attacker has performed some bit flipping attack and, uh, our ciphertext may have changed. So how can we address that problem?
A quick, quick question, uh, why can't the first mode have parallel processing as well as, as, as this one?
The first one also has parallel processing, that's true.
Oh, okay, okay, because you asked, why is this one advan, an advantage, okay, all right.
The first one is actually, it's not really used, it's it's such a weak mode that, yeah, we didn't really talk too much about it, because even if you see it on the exam, you know that you're not going to pick it for anything.
Got it, got it.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Can you explain the nonce again?
Nonce is a random uh value which is exchanged between the sender and the receiver. And uh nonce, uh I think then we can assume that even if the counter, the initial value of the counter is not shared, the nonce will uh give us a random starting point so that the attacker will not know this number and the counter will incrementally uh like uh it will increase the nonce for every uh subsequent block. As a result of which, the plain text, even if it's the same, that will not produce the same cyphertext.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Hmm, okay. So uh, okay, yeah, so I was asking that uh since we discussed that uh some manipulation or modification can take place in cyphertext, that can happen. Uh even though it will not propagate in this mode, but still uh it's still possible. So how how can we resolve that?
GCM?
Hmm, yes, but like what what like what property is there that that's going to bring about that? No, no, I'm saying that uh
Rhythmization?
No, just find like if some data is modified
Mm-hmm.
And we want exactly integrity, we're talking about integrity here. Yes, exactly, so hashing. Okay, so this is uh the Galoi counter mode, uh this one I don't have any tips to uh remember uh the name, but okay, we can say that this one includes authentication data and there is hashing. So the hash will
The quick question, uh are we talk, the the hashing, I did not understand that part. Uh could you repeat that, please?
Yes, so uh the Galoi mode, uh we uh we started with our counter mode here. And then now we want to add uh two, now we're adding two things to this one. We want uh to have uh integrity. We want to ensure integrity and then we want to authenticate the sender as well. So we are going to add two things to this same mode. If you see, the top part is the same, it's just that we have added this part here. This is the slight blue section, where we have added the authentication data from the sender. And then there's a hash function. So whatever cyphertext is produced, the authentication data, which is here presented at the beginning, that will be hashed and added to this, and then it will be subsequently added to the next one. So this way we can ensure that the entire message, integrity of the entire message, that can be confirmed and the entire message is authenticated.
Okay, got it. So hashing is a new thing we are adding to the, whatever you explained in the prior slide, right?
That was counter mode, yes, exactly. Yes, counter mode, uh we are adding hashing and we are adding authentication data. So adding authentication and integrity, these two additional features we're getting from GCM mode.
Okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, so since uh we've already discussed that the Galoi counter mode, it's a counter mode, so it's going to provide us advantages of the counter mode, which is no duplication, no error propagation, and uh it's going to uh provide us two additional benefits, which is uh there's uh authentication of the sender and uh there's integrity of the message. And uh again, there is uh it's efficient as well, because of the counter mode, you can uh perform parallel processing, uh obtain your uh like get back your plain text from the cyphertext and then later you can uh perform the authentication or verification of integrity.
I have a question, um if you can go back, I'm not quite clear on that. So I understand that you hash the authentication data, which shows that it's coming from the sender, right? But is it is it really providing authentication? Or is it just providing, are you just uh hashing the authentication data to provide integrity?
Uh no, it is providing authentication, it is providing authentication, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, can you ex- can you explain how it is providing authentication?
Uh wait, let me see now, um. So signature. This this is again, uh this is pre-shared, this is pre-shared between the sender uh and the receiver. So I'm not exactly sure about uh what is included in this authentication data, but I do know that this uh provides information about the sender, but I can look into this. I'll I'll note this down and look into this. Exactly how uh what like what it contains and how this is shared. I've noted it down.
Okay.
But for now, you can assume that this authentication data or authentication data regarding the sender that is available at both ends.
Uh kind of, I have the same question too, because when we hash the authentication data, it is so, hash is a one-way, right? So a hash provides the integrity.
Hmm.
Um so even I'm having a tough time understanding that part, how is the authentication being obtained by this?
No, I'm saying authentication data is uh some information about the sender, which is already available with the receiver. Okay, so let's assume that uh I have uh signed some document and I've given that to you. So my, I I already have the signed version of the document with myself and you also have it. So you're going to input that when you're performing the verification. And only that authentication, because remember uh if you have a different input, that will produce a different hash, the first hash. The first hash here, that is going to affect all the subsequent hashes, right? So it all depends on what you input uh here. So if the authentication data is inaccurate, you cannot uh get the right hashes. So either, so like both will fail, authentication will fail and integrity will fail.
So both the sender and the receiver will do the hash and compare the hash. Uh that is the way the authentication is also obtained, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm saying authentication data, think of it as separate, it it's separate. So think of it like, it's a signed uh it's it's my signature that I'm giving you. So I've already, you already have my signature, right? So you already have my signature and I know my signature. So when I am encrypting and I'm sending it, I'm going to add this authentication data to the hash function that we've already agreed with, that we're going to, let's say, use SHA three. And this, I'm going to uh again, this part, like the bottom part where you can see that every cyphertext will take part in uh calculating the next hash. So this entire communication, the hash of the entire communication is linked, right? So even if there's any change, you would know. And you already know the starting uh value, which is your authentication data, you already have it.
Okay.
Uh are are you clear on that now? You want me to uh repeat?
Uh no, I'm clear, clear on that, um it helps definitely. I was just thinking how it provides the authentication, the encryption itself, how it provides the authentication, that's the part I was trying to think about.
Okay, I'll tell you. Uh again, if if let's assume that I have uh uh I have given you my signature, okay? And then uh somebody else tries to like send you a message and they use a different, they'll they'll have a different authentication data, because they'll not be able to uh replicate my signature. So when you try to decrypt that, it will it will produce a different hash.
Yeah, okay, mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I have given it to you, you already have my authentication data.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we know that the message is coming from me.
Yep.
Yeah, and then the hash, that will ensure that the message has not been changed.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, yep, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, let's move on to the next one. Uh CCM mode or counter mode with uh CBC Mac, now this one looks pretty scary. And even I think I have to stare at it for ten minutes before I, it starts making sense to me. So but just the name is enough for us to know. So counter mode, we already know that what uh what benefit does counter mode provide us, there is no error propagation. Uh with CBC mode, uh we know there's no duplication. But there is chaining, so there will be no parallel processing here. And with Mac, uh which is the message authentication code, that will provide us with uh authentication and uh integrity. Uh all good here?
So the Mac is essentially the Galoi?
Uh no, that's different. This is, this one is a different mode. This is a CCM mode.
Okay, I'm just, because you said the Mac provides authentication and integrity, which the law does as well.
Yeah, so both of them, exactly, so both of them. Uh this one provides uh authentication and integrity. It has the advantages of uh counter mode, which is that there's no error propagation. And uh however, since we have CBC mode, so that means that it does not support uh parallel processing. All good? Uh is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, uh Sarah, do you, will you have um like copies of your um uh um yeah, slides, thank you. Because I mean, they look pretty good to me, that that you you know, the way that they're laid out kind of gives me a a visual picture. Will you have that available on the site or can you?
I don't mind sharing, that's fine, I'll I'll share them.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm, okay, so now we have covered uh different modes and uh the main advantages or benefits that we covered are uh you know, like having no error propagation uh or uh support for parallel processing and authentication and integrity, not just so that I can uh uh get clarity uh with regards like everybody here, understanding all of these modes. So uh let's see who's going to answer this. How, which which of the modes that we discussed or covered offer uh the first advantage? Anyone?
ECB.
Okay, and?
CBC.
Mm-hmm. What does CBC stand for?
Cipher block chaining?
Yes, and that means that the cyphertext of the first block is
Change to the next one.
Exactly, change or link to the next one. So if there's any issue, yeah, exactly. So any other?
C-CTR?
Exactly, counter mode, true, yeah, that's right, and?
The GCM?
Exactly, that was, that is also based on counter mode, so yeah, GCM as well.
The last one, CCM.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, that's that's right, we got all of them now. Now let's come to the next one.
Real quick, Sarah, so the difference between GCM and CCM is that uh Galoi can do um uh I forgot the exact words, but uh it can do parallel processing and uh CCM cannot?
Yes, CCM cannot, because uh it uh contains the cipher block chaining mode as well. It's a part like that, that's also included in it.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually linked in a way that because, so there's counter and there's uh CBC, both modes are there in CCM. So uh the way that it's uh built, the CCM modes, it it does ensure that there's no error propagation. But the CC, but because we have the CBC mode, uh that does not support parallel processing. It's just constructed in a way. Uh okay, so uh have we done parallel processing? So which which of these modes uh support that?
Counter, counter.
Yeah.
And GCM.
GCM.
Yes, correct. Uh authentication and integrity, this is a quick one.
GCM.
GCM and CCM.
Uh that's right, that's right. Okay, sorry, there are two more, uh but, yeah.
Uh sorry, did I hear two answers for the authentication and integrity or is it just GCM?
Now there's GCM and then there is CCM. Remember, counter mode with CBC Mac, the Mac card provides authentication and integrity. Okay, so there are just two uh more modes, um they were mentioned in the official study guide, so I included them as well. I kept them separate from uh the ones that we've already covered uh for uh just one reason, so that you don't get them mixed up and uh because they are the uh feedback modes. Now, whenever you read feedback, you should instantly know that we are using this block cipher for streaming input. So if in if in uh like in the question, they're talking about uh plain text being transmitted in blocks, then feedback mode, you're not, you're never going to choose. Not a cipher feedback or neither like output feedback. So these are just for um streaming inputs. Uh let me see how I can explain this, if I can draw something here. Uh just here. And here. Okay, well, can you see these lines here and here?
Yes.
Okay, so now think that, we think of them as registers, okay? Uh so previously, we were discussing uh that the plain text was uh we uh like we were taking blocks of plain text, so here, think of plain text as a streaming input. So with streaming input, like I said, with stream ciphers, even you're not going to encrypt one bit at a time, you're going to take a couple of uh bits, much less than the block cipher, uh that depends on the size of your register. So let's assume this is a register. So if we have a block cipher, that is suppose one twenty-eight bits, and then we have a register that is uh suppose thirty-two bits. So this is uh with plain text, it's coming, so we have like a stream of plain text coming, we're going to uh kind of like catch that in a buffer. Once we have thirty-two bits, that is when we're going to uh perform this encryption and uh create a cyphertext. So we have the initialization vector, which will uh be according to the size of the block cipher, because we know that the block cipher takes in a fixed bit input. So we have the key, then we have the initialization vector, which will be a block, and then the result that is produced. So now uh out of that result, we are going to choose uh thirty-two bits. The most significant or you could say the leftmost thirty-two bits, we're going to pick them. We're going to X or uh with the plain text and produce a cyphertext. So the cyphertext would be thirty-two bits again. This will go on uh to this next here. Uh call it like a register or a block, it's the same size as initialization vector. So basically, this is being manipulated now. So since we started off with an initialization vector, which was a one twenty-eight bit, so this is also one twenty-eight bit. Uh but since we are feeding this cyphertext, these thirty-two bits into this, so what we are doing is that we're going to shift this by thirty-two bits. We're going to shift this to the left by thirty-two bits and then add the cyphertext here to the right, like uh the least significant bits. Are we clear on this?
There is mud. This is, no, no, you're 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 good. I'm just saying, it's it's a lot of different modes to try to memorize.
Okay, let's just focus on what's important. Let's let's forget about the registers now. Two things, when you hear feedback, that means you're talking a bit Can somebody please mute them? Was, sorry? Okay. So uh cipher feedback, so that means that your cipher text will be fed back into the next. Cyphertext will be fed back into the next uh block or next round. So that that's all you need to remember. Cipher feedback, cyphertext is being fed back. And we know what happens when cyphertext is being fed, there is error propagation. So just remember these two things. When uh wherever you read feedback, it means that we are talking about um streaming input. The input is in streams, it's it's not in uh blocks, the plain text. And then uh I'm saying cipher feedback, so that means that the cyphertext will be fed back to the next round, which will cause uh error propagation.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So for me to remember this, because I know So, for me to remember this, because I know you said, what's the difference between this and cipher, cipher blockchaining?
Uh, cipher blockchaining applies to in, uh, blocks of plain text, and this one applies to streaming, yes.
Okay, but they both, um, have error propagation as a
Exactly.
issue. Okay, so this is, this is related to streaming and that one's blocked, okay?
Exactly, so whenever you read feedback, it's streaming. So, uh, cipher is being, uh, cipher text is being fed back here, so again, there is error propagation. How to eliminate that? Use the output feedback mode. Where the output of the block cipher is being fed, rather than the cipher text. So you can see that, uh, if we draw a line here, this is separated. The operations that you see here, that initialization vector that is already shared, key is already shared. So this part is basically creating, uh, the randomness and then we're going to, uh, just XR, uh, like, uh, the bits of plain text that we have in our register and produce the cipher text, and then that is transmitted. There's no error propagation in this case. All good?
I'm trying to understand why there's no error propagation.
Because error, uh, see, so initialization vector, we already know. We already know.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, so we are transmitting that, and now before performing, uh, convert, or before transforming the plain text to cipher text, we are output here.
Sorry, no, because before the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Exactly, because cipher text, if even if it gets manipulated, it's not going to anything. So this is basically what's happening in the output, uh, feedback mode. Is everybody clear about this one? Do we need to repeat this? Okay, uh, since, uh, the ones for the block inputs, they are more common. So let's see now, which, all the modes that we have covered so far, uh, not, not the ones for the streaming inputs, the ones we cover for the block inputs, uh, which one, uh, do you think is the most, uh, preferred and why?
GCM.
Yes. Does everybody know why?
Because it doesn't, um, provide, um, um, not error propagation, what was the next one? A parallel, it provides, uh, parallel processing.
Exactly.
More efficient.
It's more efficient, exactly, it's more efficient. So TLS 1.3, that supports both GCM and CCM modes. But yeah, uh, GCM is generally preferred because of its, uh, efficiency and performance. Okay, um, let's move on to uh, this last slide of cryptographic, uh, attacks. Uh, brute force, I think everybody knows about that one. We can quickly go over it, does somebody want to explain?
Um, I got a quick question on brute force, because I, I, I thought I understood brute force. I, I thought it was like basically just hammering away at different combinations until you crack a password. Um, but I think I read somewhere it was, had something to do with the hash, uh, um.
Uh, okay. Okay, so brute force, it's, it's, it's a kind of attack. Uh, when we're talking about, uh, cryptographic algorithms, they can be used for encryption, they can be used for hashing. So this is, this is a technique which can apply to both. Okay, you can, you can use it to, uh, crack, uh, hash functions and you can use it for, uh, encryption, uh, as well. So basically what brute force does is that it performs an exhaustive key search. Uh, exhaustive key search would mean that, uh, if let's assume I have a 128, um, bit block cipher that takes in, uh, like a 60-bit key, then, uh, the attacker is going to, uh, try all combinations of those, uh, 60 bits of key space that we have until they are able to recover, uh, the plain text.
Uh huh.
So then they'll know this was the right key.
Okay, so, okay, so it can apply to different, um, it's, it's not just one type of attack, basically.
Ex- exactly, this, this is a kind of attack, yeah, yeah, you, you can apply this to hash functions as well, where you're going to try, um, all possible inputs to maybe find a collision in the hash function.
Got you, okay.
Yeah, or maybe just try all different guesses of passwords to create a rainbow table and then find, uh, if, uh, you know, uh, if you're able to like retrieve a password, um, that's already stored, uh, which has like corresponding hash value stored in your rainbow table. So brute force, uh, just generally means that you're going to go mathematically and try all the possible answers there are. Because this is, uh, short, like, obviously, this is like a short shot, uh, way of, uh, getting, um, what you're looking for, it's just that it is very, um, uh, it requires like a lot of computing power. It takes a lot of time. And since you're moving, uh, to ciphers that use longer keys, so it becomes, um, it's, it's not as, uh, I would say, efficient. Uh, next, uh, we have, uh, analytical, or you can call them crypt analytical attacks as well. I mean, generally, that's what they're called. So with analytical attacks, we basically use, uh, mathematical and, uh, algebraic techniques to reduce the complexity of the algorithm. Because you already know that every encryption or every cipher, there's, there's an algorithm behind it. And if we reduce its complexity, then we'll be able to break it more easily. So analytical basically involves, uh, performing mathematical manipulations. Uh, there are three types that we're going to, uh, cover. Cipher text only, what is that? What's a cipher text only attack?
You're only aware of the cipher text.
Exactly, that's the most basic one. Right, you have only the cipher text, and then, uh, your goal is that you want to determine the plain text, or you, uh, or you want to determine the key. So frequency analysis, uh, you're all familiar with that, that is an example of cipher text only attack. Yes? Okay.
Yes.
So we, so we're looking for, uh, repeating patterns in this case and frequency analysis.
Exactly, yeah, we're trying to, uh, determine the relative frequency of, uh, the underlying plain text based on the cipher text that we have. Yes.
Sarah, can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Um, the brute, uh, brute force, is that also the same as a dictionary attack?
Uh, okay, with dictionary, we are, no, we are basically looking at, uh, common passwords or
It's totally different because dictionary is a list of, if I had a dictionary attack, I would have a list which says password, my password, my dog, and it seems like that. So, okay, initially, attack is not guaranteed to break, uh, thing, whereas a brute force is guaranteed to break and just take forever.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so next, uh, known plain text. What do we have in this one?
You're aware of the plain text.
Uh, we are aware of the plain text and its corresponding cipher text. Okay, so cipher text only, where there's only, we know that we have only cipher text, where you don't see only, then you have to, uh, look at what we have. So known plain text means that we have some known plain text, and we also have its corresponding cipher text. So you can use these plain text and cipher text pairs to basically manipulate the cryptographic algorithm and recover your key. So linear crypt analysis is, uh, basically a technique that takes, uh, advantage of this. So this, uh, is a crypt analytic technique which, uh, relies on, um, known plain text cipher text pairs to find, uh, you could, you can call it like, uh, like a linear approximation of a cipher. Because generally the algorithm is very complex, but you're trying to find an approximate function, uh, which comes close to the cipher. It won't be exactly the same, but yeah, something that comes close. So, pro, I mean, with the approximation, you already know this, uh, if I have, let's say, I have a number, um, 12.6734, I can write it as 13, right? So this is basically what the approximation is. Uh, should we move on to the next one?
I got a, I got a quick question, maybe I'm thinking too deep into this, but when, because I'm trying to figure a, a, a better way to, to memorize these, because they're kind of difficult. But wh- wh- when I see known plain text, I'm, the first thing I'm asking myself is, if they have the plain text, why are they trying to, I, I mean, isn't the goal to get to the plain text? To, to, I mean, to, to see the plain text?
They're trying to figure out the algorithm.
They're trying to
Oh, oh, okay, 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 sounds like it was
No, 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 the algorithm is known. Remember, we discussed that.
Oh, it's, it's known.
Security of a cipher depends on the key, yes, because right now we only have those few plain text cipher text pairs. And if we get the key, then we'll be able to access all the encrypted communication, and that is what the goal is.
I mean, I'm sorry, I can see a scenario here, Sarah, uh, 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 let, let me see, just to take an actual practice scenario. I would, I would, I would get, grab the cryptic text, you know, because that, that is publicly available. I want to know the plain text, so I would, you'd probably use some kind of social engineering to get the plain text for one instance. Once I have both of them, now I'll try to do a linear crypt analysis, take the key, and that's it. Now I don't need to do my social engineering, now from next time onwards, I'll use the key that I've got, and then just start cracking.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, exactly. That you were able to somehow get your hands on some plain text and its corresponding cipher text. And then you made use of that to recover the key. Now we need to always remember that the, uh, algorithm of, uh, a cipher, it, it's known, like with DES, uh, with AES, with, uh, triple DES, I'm sure you can see, uh, online, it, it's like a FISA structure here, the key goes here and it's splitting and, you know, just all that permutation and substitution and everything. So it's just that the complexity of the algorithm is such that the relationship between the plain text and cipher text is so jumbled that it's just very hard to, uh, find that. Which is why we, uh, some of these techniques, these analytical techniques, we're trying to simplify or reduce the complexity of that algorithm so that we may be able to recover the key.
Yeah, it actually also depends on the kind of data it is. I mean, if I can approximate something and encrypt a photo, it's okay to have a photo which has got a little bit of, you know, noise in it. Uh, as opposed to somebody's, you know, some more complicated, where, where one bit shift may change it. So it also depends when, what kind of data we're trying to, you know, break in.
Yeah, yes, we're, we're, I mean, since, uh, we're talking generally in the context of, let's assume something which we, we do not want anybody to intercept. So from that perspective, if they're able to get some information and they're able to retrieve the key, they will get access to whatever information is, uh, transmitted afterwards.
Now, my question is, okay, cipher text only, now we're looking at the, a little, a little cool attacks. Um, known plain text is like for dead, for DAS and triple DAS. And what about AES, uh? I'm trying to think of, uh, everything from the 23 brace, which is, which one is for which? Because I know DAS is known plain text, but like, if you have, uh, AES, would there be chosen plain text, cipher text, what would that be?
Okay, so with block ciphers, uh, you can use both known plain text and chosen plain text.
Okay.
Yeah, but just the cipher text, it's going to be very, very hard. But if, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a weak block cipher, then you might actually be able to do it. Uh, so, uh, with chosen plain text, uh, you can, uh, obtain, uh, cipher text for a plain text of your choosing. So when cho, uh, with chosen plain text, you can choose the plain text, with known plain text, you are given what you are given. Uh, yes? Is everybody with me on this?
Oh, yep.
All right.
Okay, so now, uh, which one is more flexible out of all these?
Chosen.
Exactly, it gives you more control during crypt analysis. And differential crypt analysis, you can tell by the name, so differential means difference. So chosen plain text, when you're able to choose, then what attackers do is that they smartly try to find, um, plain text which, uh, have like little variation, uh, between them, just so they can see that how does that translate in the cipher text. And then they try to manipulate that information. Uh, should we move on to the next one?
Sure.
Okay, uh, implementation attack. Okay, so this actually makes use of, uh, weaknesses in the implementation or development of a crypto system or a device, whatever you've made. For example, um, while you were, um, developing, um, maybe you left some bugs in the code or you did not use a strong random number generator. Or when you were writing down the algorithm, you made some errors in the code. So, uh, you know, somebody, uh, like an attacker can actually find and explo, uh, like, uh, exploit those weaknesses. So this, if there's any, uh, issue with implementation.
Would a, would a buffer workflow error be one of these? You know, sometimes the exploit is to just overflow the buffers and render things useless, would that be an implementation attack? Because somebody can check the boundaries.
Yeah, good example, yes. Yes, because we did not fix the length of the buffer when we were encoding, so yeah. Exactly, uh, fault injection attack. So fault injection, uh, in this one, the attacker actually tries to, you can say, inject some external fault into the device. Uh, for, so we know that our, uh, crypto processors, they are generally made of, uh, ICs, integrated circuits, which are very sensitive. So let us assume that the attacker tries to maybe like apply some high voltage, um, to that, um, like the cryptographic device or just exposing it to maybe high temperature or very low temperature. So this might actually mess up, uh, the working of the IC and can impact the integrity of the algorithm or the results. Uh, next one.
So what is used to protect against these type of attacks?
So again, you have to, uh, think of, I know, why don't you give me the answer, actually?
Physical access controls?
Sorry?
Physical access controls, like
Have to restrict the access, you have to stop the attackers from, uh, getting close to, uh, your equipment, which
Yeah, getting close to your HVAC equipment or close to the server room and stuff like that.
Exactly, yeah, strong physical access controls, that's correct. Uh, side channel attack. So with side channel attack, uh, uh, so we are assuming that, uh, the attacker does not have access, uh, direct access to the channel on which we are transmitting our cipher text or the data that we're sending. But, uh, they can monitor, um, the environment. For example, they can monitor the performance of the working in some other way, like, uh, the power consumption by the device or, uh, if there's any electromagnetic radiation or like the processor utilization and stuff. Uh, so when we're transmitting bits, um, it's, you know, how, like, we use like a cer- a certain fixed high voltage to, uh, to transmit, um, binary one and then a low voltage to transmit binary zero. So this, uh, variation in voltage that produces, uh, electromagnetic field. And this variation in field is something that if, uh, an attacker, uh, is able to, uh, like, uh, monitor this, uh, this kind of information, then, uh, they will be able to, uh, extract the information that we have, uh, transmitted.
That sounds real sci-fi and not realistic, but I know that it happens.
Yeah, of course, I mean, we have read about, uh, these things, remember, uh, I think one of, uh, the, uh, because electromagnetic, uh, uh, radiation or other emanations, we, we, we covered the Faraday cage. It just depends on the attacker, like how motivated they are, you know, sometimes they, they might actually surprise you, so we have to be prepared.
Yeah.
Lab settings.
There you go, that's where I'm getting at, because some of the equipment that's required for something like that is, is, you know, kind of unique and expensive. There you go. That's where I'm getting at, because some of the equipment that's required for something like that is, is, you know, kind of unique and expensive. And, you know, it's like a niche, um, set of, of, of people to get their hands on. I, I don't think it's as common. You know, so like here.
Well, it depends what the prices, the, doesn't it all depend, I mean, all, uh, the, the. I think the objective of all security is to make the effort more than the price, what you're trying to steal. So if it's worth it, then they will do it. If it's not, you discourage them.
If they can afford it.
I mean, if you wanted to steal somebody's nuclear codes, a state actor wanted to do that, they have the resources. They will go for it, because the, the price is so huge, that it's worth doing every little thing. Cause the guy on the other end is also putting some strong, strong, so you have to look at these niche things. That's my, I mean, speaking of crazy and sci-fi, um, people are able to get data from monitors. Do you know that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know all that, I mean.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I have a background in military and, and worked on as well, but what I'm getting at, for your common hacker. They don't have access to this type of equipment or resources or money. Um, so this would be like a niche set of type people, like maybe governments or, you know.
State actors, yeah.
Yeah, you know, stuff like that. That's, that's all I'm getting.
Nobody's gonna do this for my bank account, I guarantee you that much.
Yeah, nobody's going to put in that effort. So true. Uh, okay, now the last one, uh, bit flipping attack, um, it's in the name. So what the attacker does in this kind of an attack is that, um, they can, uh, they can basically change the cipher text, uh, in a way. That will, uh, result in some, some predictable change in the plain text. For example, if there's like a communication going on and the site, uh, again, this might sound a little sci-fi as well, but. Uh, it depends entirely on the motive, to be honest, like you can just randomly add noise. If, uh, just by, uh, cause like, uh, doing some bit flipping and parts of the cipher text that you're, uh, that, um, is being transmitted on the channel. Or if you have some context of, uh, some communication that is taking place, for example, if there is a transaction happening. And, uh, then the attacker knows that the next, uh, block that is coming or that next, uh, stream. Of, uh, bits that is coming, uh, they, they can, uh, it's probably the amount. Uh, it's probably the amount of, uh, uh, it's the amount that is basically going to be, um, transferred from one account to the other. They might, uh, make some predictable changes. Uh, they wouldn't know what the exactly, uh, what, uh, the exact plain text would be. But they would try to modify it. So if it's, uh, five hundred dollars, they might change it to a hundred. But they might end up changing it to like ten thousand. So you don't know. I mean, they don't exactly know the content of the plain text. Uh, but they understand the context, so they might try to cause this kind of nuisance. So this is known as the bit flipping attack. So how can we avoid that?
Was that integrity check or something, um?
Yes.
Using CCM?
Uh, yes, we can definitely, uh, use, uh, uh, yeah, uh, some kind of hash, hashing function. In, uh, whatever mode or, uh, cipher that we're using. Yes, that's true. Okay, so it's five thirty-eight. I was planning to do some questions, uh. Uh, do, do you guys want to do maybe like five questions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I actually found this, uh, link and let's see what do they have for us. I'm not very confident myself, to be honest. So let's start this. Uh, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, physical assets defined in an organization's, uh, business impact analysis could include which of the following? Personal belongings of organizational staff members, disaster recovery, line item revenues, cloud-based applications. Supplies kept off-site or remote facility. I think it's C.
You're talking about physical assets, right? It's physical assets.
Oh, I clearly I'm very sleepy.
No problem.
Let's, you know, um, get offsite, a remote facility, personal belonging organizations. I don't understand what B means.
Neither do I. I mean, this is revenue, so I think maybe they're talking about money coming in, so like train, not actually. Physical items. I, I'm gonna go with D, even though I'm kind of skeptical about it being in a.
Yeah, I would also.
I agree.
Yeah, because if you go by elimination, that's the only decent answer.
Uh, yeah, let's see. The answer is D and they have not given any explanation, but since we have given that to ourselves, so. Let's move on to the next one. When assessing the audit capability of an application, which of the following activities is most important? Identify procedures to investigate suspicious activity. Determine if audit records contain sufficient information. Verify sufficient storage is allocated for audit records. Review security plan for actions to be taken in the event of audit failure.
I picked B. It sounds like the most reasonable answer.
Yeah, I, I, I'm torn between B and C.
I think. Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I, I'm also like inclined towards A, but okay, we'll go with B and C, what it says. Oh, it is B. Okay, so then we have, um. An organization would like to implement an authorization mechanism that would simplify the assignment of various system access permissions. For many users with similar job responsibilities. Which type of authorization mechanism would be the best choice for the organization to implement?
A.
Yeah, role-based, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, good. What is the primary reason for criminal law being difficult to enforce when dealing with cybercrime? Is understark or?
A.
First. Um, yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so this would be our last page, I guess. Wifi protected access to, uh, provides users with a higher level of assurance that their data will remain protected by using which protocol? Uh, EAP, I guess.
Why do you say EAP, Sarah? I want to understand the reason. I, I mean, I, I lean towards that too, but why, why did you pick that?
Because IP said that's a VPN protocol, SSL, that's transport layer. I, I don't think, and it's obviously not secure. Uh, SSH, uh, not that, EAP, and, uh, because I think, uh, that's one of the protocols defined under, uh. Eight zero two dot one authentication, which is used for wireless network. That's why.
Yep. Agree.
Uh, A, okay, good. Which part of an operating system is responsible for providing security interfaces among the hardware, OS and other parts? Of the computing system? Uh, then, I think it's. It's B, computing base.
Ah, yeah.
B.
I'll say A.
Oh, man.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Let me read the question. Part of an operating system is responsible for providing security interfaces. Now, is response. Okay, what process facilitates the balance of operational and economic costs of protective measures with gains and mission capability? Okay, sounds like, uh, the risk assessment, yeah. Ah, risk management? Hmm, oh, yeah, I think the cost analysis, uh, is not part of the risk assessment that comes after. That's, I think that's part of risk response, so that's why risk management.
I, I recommend, because we normally have plenty of time to answer, I think we should never answer before fifteen seconds. Because these questions are not easy to digest, at least for me.
That's, that's very good. For example, the first question.
Right.
We just automatically, you know, we didn't read physical.
Exactly.
So we take the time to really read, cause that's where they'll trick you.
Yeah, I think we should stop ourselves from answering it, if you know. So we should say, I'm not answering for fifteen seconds, cause there's plenty of time.
And this one is actually long, so I think nobody's answering for at least thirty seconds. Let's read it.
This is your area, Sarah. It's all I am.
Um, no, not mine. Oh, that's, that's the other Sarah.
No, I'm talking about you, yeah. Okay, okay, so that's.
That's a pretty tricky question. I, I'm guessing D.
Uh, I think D is federated identity management, yeah?
Yeah, it, this is something, yeah, this is federation. How would you, how would you restate this question in human English?
Yeah, I know. I, I'm still struggling to understand the question. I mean, I understand option D, but I, I still don't get the question. You know, use it on the provide access to resource at partner businesses.
So there's a company, clothing retailer like JCPenney, and three people work for it. And the three people that work, Tom, Dick and Harry, they, they have user accounts that can talk to business partners. So what are, JCPenney works with FedEx, let's say. So that's what this is saying. That I, Tom, Dick and Harry, working for JCPenney, also can have access to with FedEx, right?
He, do you not think B sounds like, uh, like a better answer than? I mean, why do, why, I mean, why does the clothing retailer have to share their, uh, credentials anyway?
So, so, so do you understand the question correctly?
I, I do understand the question, no, yes.
Good.
Is it B?
I, I, I think it's B.
Yeah, I think it's B too.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm kind of confused here, cause I thought they, they provide, um. Authorization but not authentication. So like, I, they, it confuses me here, cause it says it sends credentials. I didn't know. I didn't think it sent credentials. I'm thinking OAuth, right?
This is, uh. I don't know, no, OAuth, uh, credentials are not transmitted.
Right.
At this, uh.
Yeah, it sounds almost like they're doing some kind of single sign-on.
Sign-on, yeah.
Being passed through.
I mean, C is obviously, C is not right, because we don't, we're not going to make the business partners, uh, our provider. So, yeah, that does not make sense. And, uh. I don't know what access control provider confirms as a user using industry standards sends credentials. So I don't think that there is any term called access control provider. If there is, I don't know what standard that is, so maybe not this one. Mm-mm. Uh, option A is clothing retailer acts as a user self-service, confirms identity of user using industry standards then. Um, I think user self-service is for end users. It's not for an entity, no?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the, the clothing retailer wouldn't act as a user self-service.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Out of all these, I mean, B. Uh, even though we may not be too happy to share the credentials, we'd ra- we'd rather just provide them with the federated identity information instead of the credentials. But B is probably the closest to what we're trying to achieve.
This might be one of the questions we get it right by eliminating other options. So, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, but with such a lengthy question, I'm just wondering enough time to actually, you know, spend.
I think some of the questions are, some other ones are fairly straightforward. I mean, I'm not saying we should rush through them, but they do save you time. That time should be used in these kind of questions.
I'm not sure if on the actual exams, uh, the, uh, do they give, uh, like, simple questions? I've, I've never attempted, so I, I really don't know.
Yeah.
Not given the real one.
Well, I'd be, yeah, I neither have I. So anybody here who's, who's, I mean, I, I know we have people here, right? I mean, Will, I will drop off. I think Will's, anyways, that's all right.
Uh, which of the following statements best describes least privileged principle in a cloud environment?
I don't.
I, it's, it's, I think it's easy.
I, 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 I think it's D.
Yeah.
Because least privileged principle is about, uh, restricted scope in general.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not B and C, and the first one is, I think that's privileged access, just talking about privileged access.
Yeah. See, it's not first one, because first one is giving, yeah, a lot of.
No, but read the first one again. It's saying a single cloud administrator is configured to access core functions.
It doesn't matter. I mean, wh- what if the, the, it requires three cloud administrators? I mean, we don't know what the application is. So without having more information, one cannot tell whether it's A. I mean, I'm, I'm, this is my.
It's B, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
An organization has been collecting a large amount of redundant and unusable data and filling up the, uh, the sand storage. Management has requested the identification of a solution that will address ongoing storage problems. Which is the best technical solution? Hmm.
D, I would go with D duplication.
Yeah, I think so.
But compression is also pretty popular, isn't it?
I know.
It's good, but it says there's got unusable data. Why would I use computational power? To compress data that's, I mean, they say it's redundant, it's also unusable. So why are you hanging on to unusable data? That's my thought.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, no, but, uh, do you not think that with D duplication, the data would be readily available? Because we're just trying to get rid of redundancy, but since they've mentioned it's unusable data. Does that mean that we don't need to use it and we can compress it and just archive it somewhere else?
It could be. So, so let's, let's, let's do, let's start throwing stuff that doesn't. So caching doesn't apply, right? So B is out, right? We agree. Replication is just gonna make it worse.
It's also redundant.
So the data is already redundant, so I would say.
I agree with you with the duplication.
Yeah.
The key word is redundant.
I agree with, with the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more inclined towards D, because if the data is redundant as well, so you have.
Exactly right. Exactly right.
Oh, okay. Which wide area network technology requires the first router in the path to determine the full path the packet will travel? Removing the need for other routers in the path to make independent determinations. Uh, that, not my strong area, I don't understand.
We're talking about some store and forward protocol, right? It has to be a top type of a store and forward, because store and forward will keep everything and determine the entire thing. It just won't, right?
I, I don't understand.
This is not my, this is not my strongest area. I mean, I haven't finished it yet, so I can't really speak to it myself.
What is the first hour in the part to determine the full part, the part of the day, removing the need for other.
Totally guessing B.
See, so start eliminating. I mean, something like fiber channel over ethernet means nothing, right? I mean, that's talking more. So take out C, so we, it's a probability.
I think A as well, that, that is also.
For void.
Yeah, that's also for optical and, uh.
So throw that, so it has to be B or D, right? By, if P follow reasoning.
D will not be applicable. Yeah, that's for void.
Okay, since B by elimination, I, I guess.
I think it's big, because on it's more like for application, I guess. Um.
I have no idea what I'm doing, but it's B, I think.
I think, yeah, B is, seems.
Good guess.
Okay, so this one is the last, uh, that we're going to do today. Which of the following would an information security professional use to recognize changes to content, particularly unauthorized changes? Which of the following would an information security professional use to recognize changes to content, particularly unauthorized changes? Hmm.
This is one of the easy ones, that's what I meant.
Yeah, good one, good job everyone.
You save some time on this one.
Yes.
You guys were asking about the test?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so the test is gonna be like um, they'll ask you some 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 simple like one, you know, one sentence questions, some, but mostly there's scenario based. And uh there, you know, um, so if you don't pass the first time, the second one's harder, and it just gets harder.
So 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 my concern was, uh I mean, my impression from doing these tests, not the actual exam, I haven't given that, is that. I think we have enough time, because to rush and answer everything wrong uh is is probably not a good approach. So what do you think? Do you think it's better to take your time and do it, because some answers you can answer quickly, and but but we don't know.
Well, you have, it's yeah, um you you have, I mean, like me, I'm planning to like, because I took it already, and I didn't, I didn't, I lost track of time, like my time, my um. I mean, my time management wasn't great, so, so I'm thinking of of a um, of what do you call it, a um, thinking like. One one point eight six, um, we, one one point eight six minutes on each question, like one one of one of the, one of one of our um. One of one of the people suggested in our group, you know, just just like, you know, just like um. Taking like at least less than two minutes per question, you know, and and.
Well, we've been answering, I mean, most of the, we gave in fifteen seconds here, which is why I said we should take our time.
Yeah, take your time, yeah, exactly, take your time, and because you're gonna have to, some of the questions, like like uh um. Sarah was, you know, saying, I don't understand, I'm trying to understand the question, they're gonna be like that on the exam, you're gonna try to understand, you're trying to understand the question, what they're asking. And then so and then then you're trying to understand, okay, then you're you're doing the process of elimination like you were doing, right? Where you're saying, you know, okay, let's go ahead and get rid of A, don't think about it anymore, because that's not gonna apply. Let's go ahead and look at the other other ones, okay, the let's get rid of D, because that doesn't apply. Let's look at B and C, right, and that's the way, I mean, that's the way I'm trying to approach it too, because, you know, you don't want to go back and look at those answers, because they don't apply, you don't even, you don't need to waste your time.
Wait, are you, are you allowed to go back and look at?
No, not.
Are you, you gotta move forward with it, when when they, when the first, when a question wants to start, there's no going back.
It's not going back to it, no, you're just, you're just going, you're more, I'm talking about when you're looking at the process of elimination, when you're looking at the answers and stuff like that.
Okay, because I, because I wanted to know, because I know, because I took the C C and I noticed that compared to comp T A, you can't go back to.
No, you can't go back, you cannot go back on these.
Okay, okay, so it's the same, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you cannot go back.
It's a good thing to, even if you have answered, to just take another ten seconds and review it, why is it not? If you choose D, let's answer to yourself, why is not A, why is not B, why is not C, for the complicated ones.
Yeah, anyway, it's good not to change answers, anyway, because when you second guess yourself, you have to pick the wrong answer the second time.
That's what, that's what hurt me too, was like, you know, oh, you're second guessing, you should, you should wrong, you know. Of course, they don't tell you, you know, you've got the right or wrong answer, and then it's twenty five or beta questions at least.
Yeah.
So uh you don't, they don't tell you which ones they are, and they don't tell you, they they can't give it to you in the beginning or the end or the middle, it doesn't matter.
I mean, so I did some practice exams from the um the the companion to the O S G, you know, they have that book which has these practice tests, the Cybex. Uh and as I was doing that, I was also timing myself.
Yes, that's good time, good time to do is time yourself, time yourself, um take a test that, you know, like like three hours long. And then just ti- you know, time yourself on it, and then then, you know, and just do your time management, because people run out of time, like I run out of time.
Uh and so, yeah, when I did the C C exam, I I it's a two-hour exam, which I think is excessive, I finished that in fifty minutes, right? And I wasn't very happy about it, but I really wanted to get a perfect thing, and I know I answered four maybe wrong or so. It was such a basic thing, it hurt, I said, you know what, I should have taken another fifteen, twenty minutes. There's no need to set an Olympic record, but that was C C, that was for the easy one.
But I don't know, it's just a hard choice to make uh in that moment as to like, because uh, I mean, if you're a hundred percent sure about your answers, then.
Answer and move on.
Yeah, but then I I mean, uh there are some questions uh where you might actually fumble, you might actually. Yeah, but then I think uh for me, uh like just. Uh like you're saying that we should take our time and, you know, uh make sure that we use the process of elimination, pick the right answer, but what if we run out of time?
So here's what I, here's what I was doing for myself, when I was asking. I I I apologize, just to answer your question, your question, Sarah, here's what I did, I even did that in the C C one, actually. Is that uh see that we have a total of a hundred to a hundred twenty-five questions, or a hundred fifty, is it, with the new format? One fifty, right? So so break it down into, they have a clock running on your monitor on the side, you know, whether you have the question, you have a clock, you also have a clock in the room maybe, but at least you have that on the monitor, you can see it. So uh it's a good idea when you hit uh twenty-five questions to check yourself against time. Are you going too fast? Are you going, if you are going too fast, if you.
That's what I tried to do, she said, every ten questions, check my time.
Yeah, exactly, so do that.
That's what, that's what our, one of our, one of our uh uh, you know, study study, uh you know, uh. A person or study group suggested, you'll say, check your time, like that's what he kept on doing, okay, this is how much time I have left, you know, and and then you can est- estimate, you know. How much time, you know, of course, it's gonna give you the clock right there and everything, it's gonna tell you how much time you have.
Right, it's in the top right corner, you can see the clock, so you might as well, I say, hey, I'm going too fast, I should take my time, I could be making mistakes.
How many questions were left when your uh time was over?
A hundred, well, I I I'm on a two hundred and three.
Oh, oh, okay, so yeah, that's.
So your time got over, and it, your time got over at a hundred three?
Yes. That's what I'm saying, the real questions are going to be definitely tricky and.
Oh, for sure, oh, for sure.
So, yeah.
It took up to a hundred and fifty.
So maybe it's a good idea not to go and second guess yourself, once you've done it, it's like move on, because you're just wasting time, I suppose.
Yeah.
I think, I'm thinking not allowed.
I know, because I I think uh again, it completely depends on how you're performing, uh if it's going well, then you know you can take some extra time, because you feel like. I might actually finish earlier than, you know, uh I may not have attempted all the questions. But then what if that does not happen, and you spent uh like more time on the initial questions, and then you just out of time?
But look at this.
I've read a lot of comments on, where people say that their test ended like a hundred questions, over in a hundred hundred, and they had very little time left. That if they had to attempt more, they would have like failed.
But but that but that itself is the clue, I mean, the way I look at it, is that if you're doing it correctly at a hundred, if that's the first time the assesses whether you have a ninety-five percent probability of failure or success, that's the first time it does. So if we are messing up, we're gonna keep messing up, and so it's better to answer correctly. The first hundred, because technically you could do a hundred correctly and do it, I'm not saying everybody will do it, but uh that, to me, if if you are pressed for time, it's better to get things right. But I do take Annette's point about wasting time and and Wilbur's point about, hey, once you've made an answer, you've done whatever you want to do, move on, don't go back and second guess, because you'll be wasting time as well.
True, true, yeah, that's true. Okay, uh it's six A M here, I think.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Because then I have to do my office work and have to wake up.
Thank you so much, Sarah, it's very nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Bye bye.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you so much.
You're welcome, bye bye.